Good morning. It is Tuesday, February twenty eighth at seven o'clock AM. This is a special school board meeting of the Oakdale Public School for District forty one. We're meeting in the Oakdale Schools Conference Room and we're also available via Zoom. We had several people joining us in that manner. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation and approval of the agenda, this is a special meeting, so we cannot make any changes. We updated it late yesterday. We had intended to include the distance learning and official was updated last night. So I'm not sure we need to approve it, but let's just do that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I'm but moves to approve, is there a second? A second, any discussion? During now, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Passives, the first item for discussion is the award the science floor bid.
Okay, so I kind of explained this in my guidance to you, but I included in your packets Ryan's consolidation of the bids or his recap of the bids. I also included the, he sent back the amount he broke down, the combined bid for us. And then I sent you yesterday an email because it was, I didn't think it was as itemized as I was thinking it would be. It was pretty basic. Yeah, so I sent you the itemized one yesterday. I sent you the history, so you would have that. I just, you know, and then I know that this was a little complicated, but it was when we first started doing this, I had a hard time pulling together because I had to pull from April and from David and, you know, so that, these were the most important ones, I felt, to give you the information of the history of it. So I wanted you to have that, but I'm seeing the bids, Robert was there and Monica was there, so yeah. There we landed at. So maybe I'll just let Robert start a lot more information, he talked Kurt and he talked Ryan, so.
Okay, so like Hannah said, obviously the bids came in, well, I think we should clarify the bid. Even though there was multiple bids, the way it works out, there is actually one bid because some of the bids were for partial parts of the product, project, but not for the whole completion. So, you know.
There was no electrical and there was no mechanical separate bids. There was a general and then a combined, but no electrical and mechanical, so.
There was one mechanical.
Oh, was there one of those? But no electrical.
So even when you added those together, they were not, not a lot of difference. So we got the numbers that we were working with. I just had another conversation again with Kurt, structural engineer. Do we have any other options? Is there anything that we? He said, yeah, I guess there is, they're just not, we lose, though, you'd have to close off that part of your building and have a yearly inspection. And he said, there's nothing that says that it's not gonna keep progressively getting worse, even without use. Not just the weight of the building, just the wind on the walls and everything. He just kept going on and on how there could be more, more problems and it's not going away and it's getting worse, so. Don't think there's a lot of other options there to get it fixed myself. As far as the funding side of it. We do have at least some money available, right? Wrong answer. Roughly the five hundred thousand dollars is available currently in this year's budget. The project would be paid as you go and as supplies are secured. My hope would be, I don't think it'll be completed before the end of July, so at least the final payments would be in next year and then we can use next year's building fund allocation for this and just know that we can't plan any other projects for next year's building fund.
So, and Shannon and I included this in your package too, the science floor reinforcement. This is just where we're at with funding. So like Ryan said, and as you know, that we paid the salaries with the S R three dollars, so we have that five hundred thousand dollars, which we were hoping was gonna cover the whole entire project, but it's just like seed money there for right now. We do have a special reserve, so is it July one, then Shannon can transfer half of that from the special reserve over to general, we can use that.
We would have to act on that.
You would have to act on that July, yep, I think it's July one, right?
I suppose.
The building.
We have transferred in this current school year.
Yes.
Did we go to replenish with that somewhere?
I think we did.
And then in the building fund, what is remaining right now, just as an estimate, as of today, is sixty one thousand dollars because we've had to pay these to Michael J. Burns for, he always been doing. And Shannon can give you more information on that if you're wondering about that, so.
So I think just for, will you please recap? Because the board members here have this in front of us, but the public who's watching does not. Could you recap the proposed expenditures for the project and the proposed funding?
Okay, so for the expenditures for the project, the low combined bid for the structural floor stabilization came from T F Powers for six hundred eighty two thousand, six hundred dollars. Ryan and Michael J. Burns are recommending that we have a fifteen to twenty percent contingency, just in case, you know, and we don't know what's gonna happen because there was a cracking here. We believe that there is another crack in Kayla's room in three oh eight E. So Sam Man's gonna come down and get the structural engineer, I'll come down and he'll look at that and, but hoping that that contingency will be enough. And the minimum that he is, they are suggesting is a hundred and two to a hundred and thirty six, so we went with the maximum with the, we went with the total bid of eight nineteen one hundred is what we're hoping to set aside or what we're planning for financially in order to pay for the project. That, I don't know, do I talk about the window bids that came in or?
Sure, he might as well.
Okay. Yeah, so the window recommendation, as you can see, the east elevation came in at three hundred thirty nine thousand, two hundred dollars, and that is the clear anodized finish, that's the least expensive finish. So that's what we have here in the central office. It wouldn't be like what it would look like originally. I mean, it'll look good, but it's not, you know, what the high-end finish. North elevation is four hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars. South elevation was three hundred thirty eight thousand, four hundred dollars. West was five hundred eighty two thousand, eight hundred dollars. For a total cost for it, we wanted to go with all four sides of the building would be one million, six hundred seventy eight thousand, six hundred dollars. And that's just for windows, that's not on the inside replacing that, what are those shelves?
Just the windows.
And then the blinds, but that's just, yeah. Those are two thousand two hundred, you know? Yeah. They said that glass and windows are very, very expensive right now.
Do they think they would ever come down? Does anything ever come down in price?
He didn't say that.
And not that I'm even interested in considering going ahead with windows, but we would think that there would be some savings in energy expenditures.
Oh, yeah.
We would, not that it would take like a hundred years to recover for something, but.
Yeah, they said our windows need to be replaced, but we don't need one point seven million dollars. I mean, we can function without it, but yeah, it would be energy saving because they said they are not good windows and Brennan can attest that. Some of them fall open, some of them blow open when the wind blows, you know, oh, these right over there. And he knows, those guys know more than anybody how bad those windows are, but did I mistake, he said that the windows are bad, but that one point seven were some bad?
I think it's important that we and the public know these numbers.
Yeah.
And it may be something that we should revisit in a couple of years when, you know, after we've got the urgent matter of the science floor dealt with. Is there any talk about other areas of the building that may need reinforcement? Or are they saying that everything else is pretty stable and in good condition?
Okay, so if you went back and you looked at the thing from Sam Man, I believe that that's what set up your five-year plan that we had when Dr. Steinhaus was here, so we had that five-year plan. I've been, after getting these numbers, I reached out to a couple of different superintendents and just talked to them about, you know, what do we do in our little schools? Because our carryover next year is only gonna be seven hundred thousand dollars, at least that's what it was predicted to be, right? So our carryover from our general fund. You can see from this one project, we wouldn't have enough money in our general fund to pay for that, you know? And our ability to raise taxes is not that big of an amount of money, right? So if you have twenty mils in your building fund, you're gonna get four hundred fifty five thousand dollars or somewhere between four hundred fifty five hundred thousand in our school industry. And the things that you need to do, and we're just one, one breakdown away from something like that happening. But so anyways, I C S is the three, the I C S, or you know, the company that's gonna come and do the walk through it with us in March after the school board meeting. That they felt that that's a really good thing to do for us because we don't know, you know, what are some things that, we know the plumbing, you know, is a hundred years old in some parts of our building. We've got our HVAC system, we talked about that, would be great when our, when we've got the ceiling up and we would be able to go into the HVAC system. Our building is a hundred years old, I mean, we have some of that stuff that obviously is, you know, that, uh, but if you have a hundred-year-old house, you have that piece of house, we can do the same here. So yeah, there's gonna be other things, but I would feel better with if we have these experts coming in and helping us go through it. Because I think it would be very prudent to set up another five-year facilities plan and see where we're at and what we've got to give you guys an idea of what we need to do moving forward. What are some projects that are right there on that edge that we can package together maybe as one big project? Or what are those things that have to be there, so?
And also keeping in mind that the bonds that we have in place, we have. One more year of about a two hundred thousand dollar payment and then a one hundred thousand.
We have one year left on the twenty fourteen, which will be due in July, and there's three years left on the twenty fifteen.
It's like point six.
Yep.
But there's, there's one year of about a two hundred thousand dollar total principal payment.
That's this, that's this year.
Yes. Okay, and then the next will be.
The next two years or.
Only a hundred.
Only. I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure, but I think that it's close.
So, so we, you know, we do have some already existing revenue that will be freed up. It's a little, but at least enough for some major maintenance or.
So did you want me to talk about the money, this for the trouble?
Yeah.
Okay, so looking at, this is what Shannon and I are proposing, looking at our dollars is, so the S R three dollars of five hundred thousand dollars. The half of the special reserve, like I said, it's an estimate of ninety one thousand, five hundred dollars. Our building fund that's remaining right now is sixty one thousand dollars, but we have little things coming up, but that's where we're at. So that would be six hundred and fifty two thousand, five hundred dollars. As we said, the science floor, we put eight eighteen, that was our ballpark, but eight nineteen one, so then we're short about a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, which, like Robert said, some of that, those things are gonna come rolling in next year, but that would come out of our general fund, our carryover and trying to be very, very careful about our budget. I'm sure people get tired of us at school saying, where are we gonna take that out of? You know, we gotta watch what we're spending, but just knowing that our carryovers, they only expect to be seven hundred thousand and right off.
Nine hundred.
Yeah.
For the building fund at sixty one thousand dollars, this is up at the end of, actually, this one was through the end of January. So just to kind of give you an idea of what I've spent from the building fund. The, one of the bigger, the bigger numbers, Top Gun Plumbing, that we had to pull in for this, oh, that was sixteen, just shy of seventeen thousand dollars. We've had the Michael J. Burns bills, they've come in, I think it's been about twelve thousand dollars, maybe thirteen thousand dollars. In the month, or for January, we paid Dakota Improvement to remove snow in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. We're not done yet. So then we had the construction of the science room boxes, the new boxes to have, that was done. That's probably three, forty, three thousand dollars. And then, of course, it was almost sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars to have the old science tables moved down to the storage unit, which the storage unit was in on this year. I wrote that check in July, that was seventy one hundred dollars. So, you know, in the budget, we had seventy five thousand dollars of just regular expenses and then two hundred and twenty five thousand is what we budgeted for the science floor. So we were, we've only budgeted three hundred thousand dollars to get a lot of the budget for the building fund or this.
But then the bond payment comes out until, okay?
Yes, but not this, not this, there's a special, there's a, there's a different line item that the principal and interest of the bond. This is just repairs and maintenance. So it's saying that we have sixty one thousand dollars of what we budgeted and we still have.
And that's only through January?
That was, that was for the month of December, yeah. And it hasn't, I can look it up, but it wasn't, it wasn't very much money. I mean, it was surely not ten thousand dollars, because in the, that was like, I would hate to even know, I guess. But we just had two more days of school, I mean.
There's more coming.
In what part of the S R does this fall under, who qualifies?
Uh, well, we paid.
We paid salaries, used salaries for, starting in September, October, November, and I think, I think those are the only three months I had to use.
So are you saying that we used S R money to pay salaries? So the S R money you're showing here is actually the general fund money that was freed up?
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Because I was like, how does it qualify for S R? That's why I was asking.
Oh, no, no, it doesn't qualify for it, the wages qualify for S R.
Right.
So this is sitting, the five hundred thousand is sitting in the general fund. And at the direction of the board, we can transfer, it's been suggested to transfer exactly what you need because, of course, once it gets to the building fund, it can't come out to come back out into general, but it has to stay in the building fund or building. So that's the sixty one thousand, so it kind of scares me to actually include a lot of that sixty one thousand because there's a good chance that it's gonna just get ate up with general repairs and maintenance or miscellaneous or more bills of, from the architect in a construction or that contractor or that engineer. So then my other thing, someone had mentioned that at some point, I don't remember what other project they filed, that insurance claim.
I think so.
I think here the earth is stupid.
Yeah. So I threw a mail out to Western Agency and said, you know, what's, what are our options? The response was, if this is a result of the earth shifting or the, you know, shifting or moving, it will not be covered, that's just not something they cover. And I said, well, it's not really, I said, I believe the structural engineers has at least reported that this floor was compromised because of the weight of our science tables. Well, obviously, our agent can't say, yeah, it will be covered, no, it won't, it goes to the underwriter and then they review it. So that's an option, I haven't acted on it, I haven't done anything. I said, what's, I told the Sony Mail and I said, okay, what's the, what's the drawback? What's the drawback? There's always, there's something good and what could be the bad? And I said, okay, so say they look at it and they say, yeah, that is totally covered. Is that an eight hundred thousand dollar claim? And what is the drawback of doing that? Obviously, it doesn't cost us anything to claim in. Could we be dropped at the end of our renewal year? And I'm thinking, you know, I'm not exactly sure, or put insurance reserve can even drop a school? I don't know, but she said there are, there are other companies that carry schools. So in, in and amongst that, deciding on the building, do we want to try and put a claim on the compromised floor?
So there's no chance that the floor is still under warranty?
Nine years ago.
Contractor, less than two years ago, stood here in Saturday where he had a fifty-year warranty.
Yeah, yeah. What is the status of?
Yeah, they tried to claim any money from us, so we're just waiting, we don't want any more lawyer fees or stuff.
So and the sixteen thousand dollars that we paid to top that plumbing was really in, mostly in replacement of money that we would have owed drain services anyway, so that, I mean.
Kind of a wash, but yeah, I mean, it needed to be done because it needed to be finished, so there's just.
Okay, excellent work, excellent information. I think we're wise to use the highest recommended contingency level in our planning. We can hope that it will be less than the highest. I suppose it's even possible it could go higher than that. Is there any, is there any sort of guarantee from the architect or the contractor that this, this contingency will be sufficient? And what happens if it exceeds that?
Well, that's, that's what my fear or concern would be, is if there's anything else, we can't, they have to know that they can't just do what they want because if something got added, the in-between rooms wasn't in the plan for this bid.
The in-between rooms, like we're talking only about the east and the west and not the center room?
Yes, because there was no.
There was no deflection in general?
Correct.
Yes.
So I think he is, the structural engineer is gonna come back and look at that, let's just tell him, he says, it's good. And even if he doesn't, I mean, we just have to know that. It has to be communicated to the construction company that this is how much money we have.
And the engineering firm will be with us hand in hand the whole way and there will be change orders and approvals presented and, you know, I would not, I know you're not comfortable making those decisions, but if we have, we're confident that, and are the engineers' fees for all those services, is that all wrapped up in this bid?
I know that we still are gonna have to pay the art, we're still gonna have to pay Michael J. Burns and I'm sure we'll get a bill from Sam Man for his expertise coming out during this travel, so. The answer would be no, and I don't know how much, because I've been paying in, paying Michael J. Burns and the completion and, you know, he's got a certain dollar amount of what he thinks it's gonna cost. So like the office clerical work, that's pretty much done. I wish I had, I don't have a number in front of me, but no, that's not included in this number at all, what we're gonna all, what's, yeah. And I think you had paid stuff already because this was a continuation of what you had to do last year. So, you know, it's like, it's just stuff, see, I think you paid or we paid last year, you know, and when you retained them.
How about the timing? I, we're gonna move ahead and we'll act on this, assuming we approve this, award this bid. When do we anticipate the start? Are our materials readily available, buy chain is good, they'll be here and it'll be done?
I wish we could hear that, but I bet that that's not it. So they have a start date of right after school gets out and then a finish date, I believe it's like August eleventh or something like that. It's, yeah, I don't remember the date. But I'm sure if there's supply chain issues, you know, and that's where the things we talked about was the fear of, are we gonna be able to start next year?
Well, and, and it doesn't just affect those rooms, it affects certainly the rooms below. I presume they'll be staging equipment and supplies and parking lots. I mean, we have to do, we have to do. Is there any chance that it could be even accelerated and some start earlier than? We'd still have to move students and classrooms, probably area or staging, anything that they can do to get it. So then, you know, for graduation, we would have equipment in the park.
I imagine that, yeah, that will happen.
Any additional questions, discussion, information?
One thing Ryan said, the sooner that this can, whatever we decide, if we decide we're gonna go ahead sooner, the better for us because then they can start following.
And what percent down?
I didn't get any figures, huh?
My conversations were invoicing will be as they, but it's when they receive the supplies in their insured warehouse that they can send us the invoice, those supplies of that.
I would imagine it, we'd start seeing stuff in May.
All right, what's the name of the contractor?
T F Powers.
Okay, T F Powers, have we done our due diligence on T F Powers? Are they reputable? I presume that they were brought to us by our architectural firms, so they have a good reputation, a good history, they're licensed and they're bonded.
You're licensed.
I thought they had a relationship, did you basically, like Ryan had a relationship?
Yeah, your representative was here and she was.
Yeah, she was, she was the only rep that stayed that day and raised the weather, so.
All right, we can continue to discuss, but I would, I would invite a motion to award the science floor bid as recommended by our ministry. I will make that.
I'm but moves to award the science floor care bid to T F Powers as recommended by our ministry. Is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Further discussion?
I guess I would just say that we do have a one hundred-year-old building. And since I've been on the board, I don't remember us, anybody getting all fired up about, you know, spending, I don't know how many millions of dollars to build a new building anywhere, either on an site, which would be way more disruptive, or on an alternate site. I think, I guess, just, just for the sake of interest, at our next board meeting, maybe you could do some research and maybe just see what, which Bill Marion is spending, are they spending sixteen, isn't it sixteen million?
Yeah, so I was reading an article the other day about this new elementary school in Grand Works, because I don't know if you've heard about, there's a school that they had condemned and they had to move out of there. So they've got that space and the kids in the neighborhood and stuff, but they've got forty two million dollars to build an elementary school.
Oh, this is cheap.
Yeah, and I was then talking to Tom and Tom was saying, and I, I don't understand totally about bonding and I will do some more research, but community like ours would not even be able to bond enough a four, forty two million dollar school, which is a lot of our little, our little towns that our schools are aging and are building and our infrastructure that the options that we have are very limited because of our ability to raise the money to pay for it because the cost of construction is so high. So that's why you're seeing communities that are fundraising and trying to get money to start out with, you know, in order so that they can bond new buildings. I'm not sure something will go before the state, you know, about, because we're not the only little town that's got a building that's a hundred years old.
Well, interesting, and I think, you know, maybe the, I assume that this, the engineer and the architect have evaluated the other floors in the building and interestingly, only the one with the heavy science tables has come to our attention as being deflected. uh, has come to our attention as being deflected. I, I think it's great that we're having ICS come in and that they can guide us and see. And we are going to continue to have these, but I, I don't, I don't sense a great appetite out in our community to spend even sixteen million or much less forty-two million on, on a new building somewhere. And then, and then we have the, you know, the investment we already have here. What would we do with this? Uh, I'm, I, I think we need to be prepared to continue doing some major work on the building and keep it, keep it very functional.
I can guarantee that no matter what animal finds out, we cannot build.
Yeah, it makes those windows look pretty cheap. And in, and in a couple of years, if we can get to the windows, we should try to get to the windows. But, you know, I, I've told you before, ever since I've been on board for Princeton said, you know, that chiller's only got another year or so left and it could go on anytime. And here I am eleven years later and it's still cranking away, but has had some work done. Right, any other discussion?
The new building, please report to the inspector. They go here in the building. Report to the east.
I, I'm sorry, what was it that you?
If she allows some guidance, I don't see any downfall of investigating the insurance claim.
Right. Good. As a consensus, I, I, if, if you see any red flags, I think bring them to our attention. Otherwise, and ask other superintendents if they've had experience with that. And business managers, if they have any knowledge of that. All right, um, any other discussion? The other discussion. Again, the motion is to accept the bid from TF Powers. The amount again is eight, uh, with including contingency of eight hundred and nineteen one hundred. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Sorry.
Nope, I was just trying to make sure and the motion down, right? Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. Day.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
Heimbuck.
Yes.
Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Thank you administrative team and, uh, building committee for your good work on this and you need to, need to do it, move forward. Uh, next, maybe a little easier agenda item, elections. I think maybe we just neglected to, uh, act on this.
Yes.
Our, uh, February meeting, so, um, we do need, we did set the date and time of the meeting.
No, we sent the date.
Okay, we. The election, we set the date of the election, uh, but we needed to also say a location, the time and appoint the clerks and judges.
Correct.
Okay, and can you report to us what, um, what we are proposing to do?
Um, I would, um, in the past, we've always had the location at the Oaks Public Schools. Um, I just, I'm gonna check if we have it in the main lobby or. Right, right, oh, right in here, okay. Um, within the lo- uh, location of the Oaks Public Schools, we are required by century code to have it open from eleven AM to seven PM. And I have talked with four people about, um, showing up that day and being our clerk and or judge. That would be Rand, the gamer, Carol Wolf, Barb Boyle, and Kate Op. I have a list of others, but they have tentatively agreed, if everybody is okay, that they would be willing to, um, work that day.
Okay, I would suggest that we list the location as the Oak Public School Central Office. That's referred to this space hours. So I'll, I'll seek a motion to set the June sixth. Uh, for, uh, the Oaks Public School Central Office from eleven AM to seven PM. Um, and, uh, appoint the clerks and judges, which, uh, who have been identified by our business manager. Set motion, Nagel makes that motion. Is there a second? Uh, Heimbuck seconds, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, uh, distance learning.
Okay, um, so in your packet, I gave you the calendar. I'll bring it back to in March for uh, that to be amended. I just thought, well, we might as well do it all in one. Also, hopefully there's more days, but. Um, and then I also have the storm day makeup, kind of explaining, uh, how many banked hours we have remaining. So as of, um, last Thursday, we have thirty-two hours of days time, but our staff has kind of spoken, you know, and we re- we work together with them that we really don't want to do virtual learning because we don't feel it is the best for all of our kids. It might work for some, but, you know, I know there were questions out on social media and stuff about, and, and some of you got contacted about the principles to do, why we aren't doing, um, uh, virtual learning. And we just did, we don't feel that it's the best for us. And, you know, I had, uh, some, uh, somebody reach out to me and they had to work at hospital and they said, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna be home. I wasn't going to be able to work with my kids. So they appreciated that we didn't have that. However, we're nearing, if we have more storm days, we're nearing the end of our bank hours. And so virtual may be the only thing that we have for an option. So you need to give approval for it as a board for us to use um, virtual learning if we need to, or, you know, if, if we choose that option. Uh, the admin team and I met, we're not going to go to virtual until we're out of hours, which would be for more storm days, which I hope we don't get there. Um, with four more days, but then we would go to virtual learning. But I want everybody to know and to go on record that on those days when we are not having school, the teachers are doing PD, so they're working. And we have been able to do PD this year that we haven't been able to do. So the teachers are working, they're meeting their contract hours, the kids just are not at school. So it's not a day where the teachers are not. So there is learning going on on that day and that's what the whole reason why the state with hours was for options like this, so. But what I'm asking for you is your blessing, if we need to do virtual learning, that you will allow us to do that.
So if we have to do this virtual, what is it gonna look like? Are they gonna have to be on Zoom calls? Is it gonna just be, you know, here's your assignment? Figure it out.
That, that still has to be decided by us. We have to come up with a plan. The children have, have a deliverable. So that means that, um, let's say we decide to do not send home devices in the lower elementary, but they take home a packet. The children will have to finish the packet and that will count for their attendance for that day. It might look different at each of the levels, um, but they, you know, for the high school, the teachers will be available. So that's one of the things you have to have is that if, um, it's one of the kids are at home working, they have to be able to reach the teachers during the day either by email, phone call, Zoom, but I, I don't know if they would have Zoom classes. I don't know what it would look like, but we would communicate with the parents and let them know, you know, what it would be. The high school obviously would be different. They have their devices, but I don't know if we will send home. They're just, right. They're actually, we don't have very many families that don't have it, but if they don't have it, we know, you know, and we would communicate and make a, a, a big sport or an admin sport, so. It would not be our choice of learning, so you're not gonna be honestly a high quality learning day, just simply because to go all the way across the board for all five hundred of our kids, it's not possible to deliver the same thing, but we can have a day of learning meet the requirements of being in school, so.
How do you plan for that? I mean, a lot of the times we don't call school off ourselves.
Yeah. Well, it's kind of like we know this weather, we, we can see the weather coming. So like today I'll send out to the teachers and say, okay, make sure you take home your book. We're doing a book study. Make sure you've got your book with you so you can do this, so we can kind of do ahead of time. And we, if we start getting down these days, you know, that we've got just a few days left, we will communicate with the teachers. Greg will work with his teachers, Brandon will work with his teachers and we'll prepare the kids the best that we can. At that point, it's kind of a, just checking the box for being, it's, you know, and I, we'll just do the very best that we can.
Feeling when we adopted this policy, it was so that that option was just possible. Wasn't that that was a go-to every time we go to school, but then if we did, it would be.
And that's all that I would be asking for because we would use our days and we would, we would PD for the teachers, so we would meet our contract dates, but it would only be if we absolutely have to, and we don't have another option, because otherwise, we're gonna have to start adding Saturdays or longer days, because we'll have to make up those hours.
Saturdays are great. Ice cream. Got this really big.
Kids go to school on Saturdays.
Looking at our school calendar, which thank you for putting it in our pocket, seeing that there is a PD day, a teacher PD day day on March seventeenth and April tenth. Uh, given that our teachers are getting these PD days, could we potentially, um, make, excuse some of, some of the PD for, for those days? And if, if it's, if it's essential PD, please correct me, but could that be substituted for, um, a school day?
So, okay, then they wouldn't meet that. Okay, so you're saying so like the seventeen have school on that, that's a PD? We could, but we really need that in face PD. Cause we haven't had an in-face PD since, well, February seventeenth, but we had a lot of people on on that day that was state wrestling and and we, we really need that face page. April tenth is actually a day where the teachers did some outside of school time. How many hours did we decide on? Fourteen. They did fourteen hours of PD outside of school. It couldn't be done during school or it was on their own time, like during their prep. And in exchange for those fourteen hours, we don't, those teachers don't have to come in on April tenth, and almost all of our teachers have met those fourteen hours. So the teachers, that is a PD day, but that's time that we've done over and above in exchange for the tenth. So the teachers really are not going to be there on that day. So I kind of want to protect them, because we promised the teacher staff. That was something that we told them that we would do and I really wanted not to score on that day. And we need the seventeen, just the end of the year. That's our last PD that you face to face.
All right. Anything else? So, um, you are seeking from us, uh, a motion to approve uh, distance learning, uh, a distance learning option, uh, should we run out of, um, banked hours? And can you for the public explain what are banked hours?
Sure. So, um, for the state of North Dakota, we have a minimum number of hours that we have to be in school. So elementary's nine hundred and sixty-two and a half hours a year. High school is one thousand fifty hours a year. And each of our schools has one thousand one hundred and nineteen point one six hours that we are in attendance. So the state allows us through at the last legislative session that if we meet those minimum number of hours, we have, we can bank the hours and use those for PD time, or we can use them for virtue or virtual learning, or, you know, big storm days. It gives us a little bit more leeway, and we've already made up two storm days. So we've done stuff like we have tried our hardest, you know, to make it up. We've done PD on those days. We aren't just saying no school, everybody's off. We're making sure our teachers are meeting their contract hours. Um, that, we met our contact time already, so we're doing everything that we need to do for the state to meet those minimum requirements. Even though minimum isn't the best for us, I'm, by no means are we saying, yep, we just are gonna meet the minimum. It's just that a year like this is why they went to hours, so that you were able to have a two hour late start or a day off from school because of school.
You have anything this year?
No, he won't because the hours are there, like they switched over to hours. So the schools have the opportunity, like we can do virtual learning to do those days. So you, I don't think we'll ever see a governor forgive something, just simply because that, that's why they wish this.
Were we under hours last week or now?
Days. Yeah, days, yeah. And the days were super hard to work with because, let's say you had a two hour late start, well, that counted as a whole day, even though you were in school, it counted as a day. Now we can do hours. So that's very, very helpful in that case. So you can see where I, if we had a two hour delay, we just took that time off.
Is there a motion, uh, to approve distance learning as an option if we exhaust our banked hours?
I'll make that.
Or moves to approve a distance learning option, should we exhaust our banked hours? Is there a second? Day seconds. Now we can go start discussing.
You said distance learning, that's a lot better. Yeah, I like that.
Distance? Okay, is that what we, is that what I said?
Yeah, you said distance. I did virtual, but we might not be doing. I'm here, I virtual.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I just want to say that we all are on the same you know, page that this is not the best option for learning at all. And I give that other school you're doing it, but it's not in the best interest of the learners.
Well, it also occurs to me that every student has the option to read books, to, you know, do relearning and I, I, not that, you know, not that they're all going back, but sometimes a day of freedom from the grind I think stimulates the mind to, they're, they may be learning.
Or we need to meet an obligation to the state as well to our family and student and do the best we can with the options that are given.
Any further discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, now I'm seeking a motion to, for the board to enter into executive session to discuss negotiating strategy under, uh, North Dakota Century Code Section forty-four dash oh, four dash nineteen point one nine. Is there such a motion? Uh, Heimbuck moves, is there a second? Nagel seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, leaving the roll call or no? You know. Oh, let's just take one. I'll just take one. Okay. Nagel.
Yes.
Thor. Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Miel.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero and we will, and let's back up a second. Who did we want to, uh, be with us in our? I, I would request that we have, uh, business manager and superintendent with us at least sexually. Um, is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Let's just, um, have a motion we thought that. I apologize, but it's acceptable.
Heimbuck, motion to move into executive session, including Anna, itself, Shannon Johnson.
Correct. Okay, um. With that, let's, um, excuse everyone else. Thank you for being here this morning. All right, we're back in open session, uh, of the Oaks Public School Boards meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth. We ended our executive session, which we were discussing negotiating strategy at, at eight twenty-two AM. Um, we have no further business or agenda items, just one announcement related to the finance training that, uh, the district has uh, bought for like three hundred dollars?
The school board, the Northwood School Board Association is having a month-long, uh, finance, I'm not sure what they call it. And.
The web, it's a webinar.
Webinars, yep. Thursday, at six o'clock, it starts, it's on Zoom and uh, so we signed up this, this school board. Um, so you will be getting a, uh, an email from somebody within the school board association. Um, the Zoom call starts at six o'clock on Thursdays, the second, the ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and the thirtieth.
Yeah, we recorded.
Just no action required. It's just a point, uh, just an announcement. You'll be getting the email.
By your school emails. That's how I signed you up, was on your school emails. And just, you know.
And I, we could, could have paid so much for one person or so much for two people, but then a little bit more, we can have it available for everyone. And so all of you are registered and I encourage you to. I, I know you.
I'll watch it at my leisure.
At your leisure. At your leisure.
The first one is Thursday, understanding financial reports. Then it's district mill levies, budgeting, purchasing and bidding. And then general counsel with Amy DeCock, Amy.
DeCook.
DeCook.
Okay, just a good professional development and reminder, Friday, Saturday.
Yes, maybe they're less.
Do we have to be there at eight thirty or can we come at like eight fifty-five?
I think you'll be fine. They're just gonna have breakfast at eight thirty and just kind of beginning to know each other and then nine o'clock.
Kind of sounded like a Nazi camp. The little work.
Oh, yeah, actually, I can leave.
Yeah.
So good professional development opportunities. The board is growing. So uh, thank you all for attending this special meeting. I will declare as adjourned at eight twenty-four A.